Yes.
Okay, it is five o'clock with public's meeting in Littleton's Board of Order. We begin with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if it is okay with the board, we will move right to section four, new business item A, the Y L T A field trip request, and then we will go back to the agenda as prepared.
Sure, do you need me to stand up or can I just go here?
You could sit, but if you could just say your name, that would be great.
Yes, Christopher Marks, school industry employee, teacher. So before I go into the request for this round of trips, I thought I'd update you since the last time I was here, I believe it was October, I think, one I was looking for. We had two courses, those have been completed, one was the Alta High School Retreat, that was well attended, that was a leadership collaborative experience, so we had eight students who went down for that on November, November fifteenth and sixteenth. Most of those students then eagerly signed up for the subsequent Rollinners First Aid Course, which was this past March. So we included a few more, and we had, that was a sixteen-hour course over the weekend. It's pretty much a college level, led to a national certification, so all eight participants earned their certification. So those were both very successful in my view. So kind of going along with that, this year we've also had the LEAP program that I've been working with Rochelle and with the DAP. So that's middle school-based, we go every Monday, off-campus, eleven-thirty to two-thirty. Today, as an example, that's why my hair is all frizzy, I was in a helmet up on the artist's block, with the students out in the wind, you know, it's blowing around, but we're gonna take them rock climbing after break. So that's kind of building, and we've actually backfilled in some more students from the general population, we feel have leadership potential, but we're trying to like build a pipeline.
Do you hear artists lot today?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Pretty chilly and windy.
Yeah.
Beautiful day for telling, so they did a tremendous job, all but two, they all got to the edge, but just too elected to not then go down under the edge of the cliff, it was fine, but they did everything, you know, got ready. So more to the point then, I'm here tonight before you all to speak about there is a Alta Middle School Adventure Camp, so much in the same way we did the high school retreat, actually, I'm better myself. It's the Alta Middle School Retreat is what I'm talking about first, so that's coming up in May, May eighteenth and nineteenth. That's pretty much a carbon copy of the high school retreat, but for middle school students, so that's kind of building in our scaffolding approach. That's at the AMC Highland Center in Crawford Notch, so that's a Sunday and a Monday, so with an overnight on Sunday. So that's lodging meals, and the students then, they're collaborating with about a hundred other middle school students from across the North Country. Last year we did things such as several different levels of hiking, we did rock climbing, there's a bunch of indoor activities, so that was very well attended, so we're looking to run that again coming up in May, as I said. And then, as we did again last year, there's another overnight, we did a middle school adventure camp, the first week after we were out of school last summer, so we're looking to do that again, Monday the sixteenth through the eighteenth of June. So that's down at DAP's base camp. So last year we did rock climbing, and then it was going a brutal heatwave, I don't know if you remember that, it was so hot, it was what, a hundred degrees down in the wilderness, and we were on the water, we went down to Swan Lake, we were at Echo Lake, because that was, other than the first day when we went climbing in the shade, it was just too beastly hot. But this year we're planning an overnight camping trip as part of those three A two nights. So those are the two events, so it's the middle school retreat coming up in May, and the middle school adventure camp for Littleton and Oldham, that's in June.
Yeah, cool. I don't remember being hot, and I'm sure.
It was.
I'm sure that I will remember what hot feels like to me.
Michael Arthur Mahler on the highway on ninety-three going to the speed leather course was one hundred degrees, so that's after it had already like kind of adjusted, one hundred degrees on ninety-three. So that's hot.
Can I just say that one of the students in March is a part of the outdoor rep for CTE, so those students are part of that, are part of that, is embedded in here, so they all get industrial recognized credentials for that, for certification, it's part of our completed program for CTE.
Nice. Any questions? We'll look then for a motion to approve the Alta field trips as presented.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stay in motion carries four zero, we'll move on to the business report. This is a reminder, since I'm the worst, we have to make sure we're looking at the things that J.C. and Christine are sending us, and signing them electronically, because we pivoted to a digital modus operandi.
Yeah, four out of five of you, we're up to date now, so we certainly have majority of the signatures, so we're good. I'm gonna assume that the board is in support of using electronic signatures, we started using it with contracts, that way we can manage that a little bit easier than just sending it to the building and guessing who they're gonna look at it, or if they got it, or what have you, so we are using it for more items within the business office. As of last week, when I did this report, we have a minimum of about five hundred and sixty thousand left to reduce taxes. I'm always on the lenient light side of my estimate, and it's only April. Just the past couple days, Rochelle and I have been working on a grant, that's basically a transportation reimbursement.
Are you buying another grant?
Nope.
So.
Two.
How come Rochelle said no and you said so, those are different words.
But they do run.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not buying it, but I have the opportunity to be reimbursed for it.
Yeah, so it's just gonna be revenue coming back, and if we're approved, the whole amount, it's gonna be pretty significant.
If we do return five hundred, whatever, thousand, can we return it in pennies, and can I personally deliver it to the town manager's office?
Well, let's talk to Erica about that, it's her, you know, her main.
You can study that out.
We'll see if she can order that many pennies, but yeah.
There's a band in the neighborhood.
That's right, we have tons of bands, I hadn't even thought of that. Don't we have a tractor, too?
Yeah, with a bucket. So anyways, so if we are approved, and we get the whole amount, or even partial, that will significantly change this balance, so we're gonna talk about other things under committees that changes this figure a little bit, hopefully, but for now, what I know of, is that a minimum, that's what we're at, for just reducing taxes. I supplied you guys with that detailed estimated unreserved fund balance sheet that shows you where our overages or under budget and all that good stuff is as of last week. Like I said, we still have POs open, and they have till the first of May to get them on for our purchases from the budget, so we'll see exactly where we're at, probably two meetings from now, I'll have a much better estimate, and by then, we'll know for getting that grant slash reimbursement from the Department of Ed. So, um, let's see, what else did I have? Probably two meetings from now, the second meeting in May, we'll talk about cost per pupil and setting our tuition rate for July one, because we haven't done that yet, but we've had a lot of other things going on, so I keep pushing it back. And the only other item that I need from you is I need you guys to appoint three representatives to the co-curricular committee. I did supply you with a copy of the MOU for when we well negotiated this past fall, Matt and Travis were both part of that negotiating team, and the teachers, to my knowledge, have not appointed their three members yet, but we started getting the ball rolling because it really, we need to settle this by beginning of the school year.
Fifteen, actually.
Well, it was supposed to be done by April fifteen, but obviously neither side has been working on it, so we need to appoint the three. I've already started working on the comparison of North Country co-curricular stipends with Littleton, so I will have that done before we have our first meeting, so we'll be able to, the six of us, sit down and review that even before we have our meeting, so that people can come to the table with questions and stuff.
Do you have a recommendation as to who the three that we, who are the three that we should appoint?
Well, I think.
In other words, who are the two that will be with you?
Well, we were thinking that a board member from the negotiating team.
Travis, yeah.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, Travis, and maybe a building administrator, or something, I don't, what did you think?
Yeah, we talked about someone from arts.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe someone you.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, so.
I wish I knew who they were appointing, because then we could kind of offset that with someone with experience in, whether it's an advisor or a coach, you know what I mean? I don't wanna have all coaching experience or advisors.
Do we wait to appoint them until April?
Yeah, do you, well, you can appoint the two of us, and then we'll come back for the third. Is that all right?
And then we have a lot of other things we have to get back to, right, like facilities, if we hold that till their report.
We're gonna, yeah, yeah.
General assurances, renting facilities, all that stuff coming up here.
Yeah, so that's all that I have for now.
Okay, so first off, any questions we have, things that we have discussed? Second, was anyone willing to make a motion to appoint Travis Howard and Patty to the co-curricular committee, as stated, in the recently approved LCA MOU?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Is Travis okay with that?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stay in motion carries four zero, we will, please give us your recommendation for who the third person should be, and we'll look from there. Okay, we'll carry on with the agenda, going then next to new business, having already done the Alta field trip request, and move on to the of the notch state eval report.
So, I believe they're in your file?
They are.
Okay. The lower the number, the better the program's doing, so under ADP, I got a thirty-five to share, so out of a hundred, that's where we stand, and then under the ADL, we're at a forty-three, and that, we're considered in a very low, low risk for school, out of a hundred. What started, Steve came in while I was reading these and getting ready to write my risk assessment, so, and you have to do an improvement plan based on your reports, and that's what I've been working on, they're thirty-six pages each, and I need to do Berlins as well, and Berlins does sixty-three, so they're not as good, but I hope to change that around for the coming year, but it's just an overall checkpoint that they do for the state, we do quarterlies every year for WEOWA, because I'm under that workforce, these are both workforce grants, so I just go through them and write our improvement plan for what our plans are for the following year, and they've come down significantly every year. We always have the number, we just don't have the demographics up here of how many people need a high school diploma, so that's always a five for me, but everything else was in pretty good shape. Our numbers this year, just to give you an idea, there's seventy students enrolled for this year, for, sixteen were duly enrolled, meaning they're under the age of eighteen, fifty-four are over the age of eighteen, in the Title II format, Berlins has twenty-six students, they're all Title II students, and then this year for us, we will have, under diploma, twelve students graduating and five high sets, will be graduating in May this year, so the numbers continue to do well for both programs. And then I have the Integrated Education Training Program, and I have six people complete more than one I E T certificate, so I have Microsoft Office Specialist, and I also have Child Development Associate certifications.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you for the report.
A lot of work.
Any questions then?
So. 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 Thanks.
Thank you for the report.
A lot of work.
Any questions then?
I know that none of you have ever seen these before, never really shared them, but Dr. Malice thought it would be interesting for you to see them, to see where the programs are, and these reports are then put into a formula for funding, so again, lower number, it's a combination of things, but.
Thanks for clarifying.
They're to be level funded right now for next year, so that will be up over a hundred thousand for both Littleton and Berlins, so.
Thanks for clarifying the number, because I was reading it going, thirty-five?
No, I was like, yeah, something, I'm so happy to get that, this happened a year ago, so, yes.
Oh, I got, so I was gravitating towards this is a low, is this a low number, so I didn't know, so.
Yeah, it's high, you see that square sort of graphic case, but it's overall risk rating is very low.
Yeah.
Which means our programs are doing very well.
Yeah, that's good.
What's the status of funding, or any more?
So for the WEOWA, which is not the ADP one, the thirty-five one is still in the air, if you followed anything, so the state budget, cut all ADP off the board for that funding, that is the smallest grant I got for Hillad, but the other two are WEOWA, and they're staying level funded for WEOWA next year, which means I would stay at the same rate that I got this year, which was a hundred and fourteen thousand for Littleton and a hundred and fourteen thousand for Berlins, and then the I E T, I received thirty-five thousand for that, so I'll get thirty-five thousand for that guarantee. So ADP, we received thirty-three thousand, so we're holding what, where that was, but I have enough within the WEOWA to support ADP.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So much, Peter.
Yeah, just to bring it back, we'll talk a little bit about the compensation structure later. I think the big question that the board had is, talked to Crystal and Kelly quite a bit more about this, is we're not gonna, this program, as its staff right now, as a proposing, doesn't serve the same number of students, but it goes back to the levels we had pre-COVID. The difference being that the COVID funds were mandated specifically to spend some of our COVID funds, I think it's twenty percent, right, on addressing learning loss, the summer schools are very placed, direct a lot of funds, supports learning loss activities, we opened up the admission process, recruited, went out, everybody tried to bring in a lot of kids to that, and as most districts did, I think the summer school programs have benefited greatly from the COVID money. They were back, back into reality, and, you know, this is not to imply that everybody is perfect, back where they were before COVID, I think that the numbers don't lie, we're not, we're not very nationally, or as a state, or certainly locally, but we made a lot of progress. So this goes back more to the required services via I E Ts of students, extended school year services, that can be instruction-related services, speech OT and so on, and we will have, we will have some students invited as well based on teacher referral, you know, so it does include some students that we think could benefit mostly from summer school programs. We talked about going, cutting back a little bit, three weeks, restoring back to the four weeks that it has been before, and like I said, the main thing we need to miss a little bit further about is the compensation structure.
Sorry if I missed this, can shuffle, but two of the student load, we're now back to parity with the last year?
No.
No.
No, it's a lesser, lesser program because of the loss of COVID, got you, for the special funds for COVID.
So I guess we talked more about it. Any questions in the meantime? Move on to the procedure for renting facilities?
We've had a, we did have a request from a community member regarding our policy and process, which we delivered to that individual. I think the essence of the question, the concern was, we don't charge a lot, you know, in cases where involved close-arrows students, I think the question was, look, these are people that are individuals who are giving it their time to help our students, and not only they're using it in the summertime, and even in the school year sometimes, but in other areas as well, and we want to revisit the policy, because we follow the policies. Judy House is used to be the bad guy sometimes, and tell people, look, this is what it is, following the procedures, the policies of the board. I wish for this policy committee to look at it carefully, do some research, we could certainly do that.
And in my report, I spoke to reviewing the procedures and policies with the staff that have the direct contact. Well, elementary school's been used a lot, that's fully booked, and Kapler and I have worked, Chris, sorry, Chris and I have worked hand in hand every time someone's come through, so the communication's been really clear. I do wanna implement the form that I supplied to you guys, and we just need to make sure we're collecting money ahead of time, because they're booking that space, if they choose not to come because they're out of tournament for the weekend, and now they're tired, and they're not gonna practice that Monday night, they're gonna have to pay for it because they reserved it, so we haven't been able to rent it out to someone else. So just, I think it's just a clarification, and I did see a few places where things didn't line up exactly from this policy to this procedure to this, so I think it just needs to be reviewed, and I think all the people, people that have hand in it, need to just sit down at the table together and work through that, so that everyone's in the same group.
So the recommendation at the moment is to keep enforcing the policy without change, but have the policy committee, or some essential of the policy committee, or some group of people, just do a review and come back and do it.
Yeah, exactly, so continue charging, if it's not school sanctioned, then they are charged.
Thirty-seven fifty in ninety minutes.
Yep.
That's not terribly steep.
No, so, just, like I said in my report, I don't wanna be a head counter, it's not school sanctioned, it's an entity that's funded outside of this district, so I just feel that they should be paid. If we give one person an exception or one group because of this reason, then what's the reason for the next group? So, I just, plain and simple, everyone gets charged unless it's there, you know, and it's something school sanctioned.
Where do you tie the funds to once they've been collected? Are they tied to just the miscellaneous fee?
Yes.
Do they go to facility expenses?
No, no, it's just a miscellaneous revenue, it's rather.
Many of the basketball coaches in the area have a particular opinion or definition of these administrations on this?
No, I think they're right, we've got four boys from Littleton, we've got twelve total, and you just, what a nightmare to try to, well, there's so many kids in Littleton, they should get it free and they shouldn't, and you pay extra to have the kids play this, that goes towards that, so I think.
Can we pass a policy and say if the elementary school is passed in Hillage, it can be free?
No, it's my, double then.
Two hundred and seventy-five?
Yeah.
All right, any, we don't want you to take a vote there, but any questions or concerns? Okay, then we're gonna move on to general assurances?
What have you been waiting for? So there's a lot of requirements, and I think that, you know, that changed slightly from year to year, but this is the same thing, it's been looking at for some time, we're required to go through these, answer any questions that the board may have, or the public may have, if they were to be, if there's any public here that has questions about what we're required to do to get the federal grants. A lot of these are pretty common sense procedures and laws, making sure that we're following procurement procedures correctly, making sure that we're not discriminating, that we're following Title Nine, or, excuse me, Title Six regulations, that we use fair practices in what we spend the money on for the grants, and just a lot of other provisions, the Hatch Act, which limits the political activities of employees whose principal employment activities are funded in part with federal funds, so there's a number of items in here that we're signing off on, in this case, I sign off, and Matt signs off, if the board in fact does approve this document. These are our title funds, Title One, Title Two, Title Four, Title Five, we've all been through this a few times every year, but we just need to make sure that I answer any questions you have. I always look to see if the reducing text messaging while driving survives in the next iteration, this it did, it's under number sixteen, Seventeen Pro Children Act, and just a lot of By American Preference eighteen, there's a lot of pieces of this, but we do our very best to follow, so I'll open any questions dealing right now.
Any questions about the general assurances?
This isn't completely new, no.
Just pieces of it have been modified, you know.
Slightly, yeah, nothing, I went over, I had a side-by-side document, actually, very Anastasia from the regional was kind enough to provide a document that had been put together, and it's, for the most part, very, my, oftentimes, it's things like, something that's referenced might have a different reference number, that kind of thing, but the basic content over there hasn't changed much.
Okay, any additional questions? I don't think we need to take a formal vote, correct?
No, I think we.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, because it's in the, on the general assurance document that we.
Wrong idea, well then we'll look for a motion to approve, sorry, motion to accept the general assurance for grants for the school year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, presented by Zebra.
Motion.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, the motion carries four zero, move on to report on the joint town school budget for the meeting. Most of us were there, I think everybody who wasn't kind of got the gist of it. I think the actual items to come out of that discussion for the board to be aware of is that the superintendent will be meeting with the town manager, and perhaps engaging also with the chair of the budget committee to explore how budget guidance could work in the state. and be shaped. I'll just remind the superintendent as he remarks on that perilous journey that the board had previously been had of him, that he were not in a position to agree to non-binding requests from the budget committee. And I can't imagine the board's position is going to change on that. So just, I guess with my voice, engage or the other is that evidently we need to reaffirm our representatives on the capital plan effort that had been Steve and I and Bill joining us at the last meeting. I would be partial to just say, three of us are still going to be involved and they could do that what they will. And if it rejects that, we can adjust. So he would be able to give that to the board. And obviously I think it will be imperative, once the tax rate is set for the business administrator, for us to make a big expletive relief deal about updating that group, add layer of quarterly and tax rate is not final, to restore some of the grade damage that was inflicted on the second by the town manager. I would have that on my agenda.
I, I did leave with dying today. Through, kind of talked through some things that were, that led me, I have reached out to ten men, we have heard that from four of us. Me, I'm a tax, I don't know what to do with things, but something we're asked to do, so I'm making sure we have that. And the message received, I won't, I won't, I won't be negotiating any, any numbers as I realize I don't like authorities to do that. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a personal call. So, yeah, we, we, we do the best, we do the best we can.
And I do think, I don't, I think it's pretty important to have this discussion, but I would just say, if these meetings continue to unfold the way they've been unfolding, I think the board needs to reassess going out and ask to continue the things. Because we've here to fore, we've not really accomplished anything. There we go. And I think that's what we hope. Greg or Dale have any additional observations or attendants?
We've never been, we didn't discuss what I thought we were going to discuss, so that was just a.
I, I do agree that this, we're off to an extremely slow start. I don't think we should be giving them more expectancy than, than what we are.
I mean, you were, you were physically present along the speed. I was virtually there for that meeting. We're telling you, said we're going to CIP, the planning board was going to take over the effort.
Yeah.
That was eight weeks ago.
Yeah.
And they were meeting the following week.
Yeah.
And I do not get the vibe in that discussion that we were just going to put, just let it die, let it lie. And for the town manager to come on Thursday, you know, well, the only problem here is that we didn't have a cabinet to plan, but the schools each had their own plan, which is totally outdated, everything's gotten packed up until that point. So, let's see. Okay. Anything else under the banner of new business? Move on then to the residency program.
We'll be meeting on Wednesday with our, our new residents for the upcoming school year. And we'll have a number of individuals involved, I've Brian Walker, Sarah Scribber will be coming from Lincoln State, and of course Kristen Moreland, myself, Crystal Martin, several of our teachers who are either cooperating teachers or co-teachers, mentor teachers will be there, Melissa Jones will be there. And purpose of that meeting is to get them, get them over here, let them meet the people at Lakeway, see the, the school will be working in next year, take a, take a tour of the rail trail, where the apartments will be, where they'll be living in next year, and just going to get the, take the first steps on that transit and get them, accompany or use a few of the people that they're working with and the first step in the process for them. And we decided to welcome them in and look forward to spending a little time with them. I will be present for the entirety of the orientation as well.
Okay, any questions on that?
Steve, on your students, can we have them here? So are we only committed to the number of units at the rail trail that we have for students, like we are not responsible for four units regardless of how many students are there?
Yeah, we reach out to them, Patty actually reached out to them sometime, you know, just to clarify a couple of things. When, when they needed to know the number, first of all, then once we, we said, gave us a little more time. It was a little bit unclear when they needed to know, we'd say, we'd give us some day first to notify them of the number, which we did.
Yeah, and we have, we do have a new agreement.
They do agree with us, a little more, a little tighter. We did, the down, I mean, the downside of that, of course, is that we, we lose the four and we just have the two now, and going forward, that's, that's the downside.
So if we were to get back up to four, availability, the base almost to have them.
Correct, correct.
You know, if we go back to four, I still go back to my idea, we can do a better option than, than what I think. Yeah, so that, that's a, that's where we, where we are at this point. And I think it's, like I said, we're deciding to welcome a couple of new residents and get that program started on a good foot for next year.
Any additional questions?
Oh, that's, I, one other thing I was going to mention, I did, I think it's one of the four, this is, we, I did reach out to possibly them, so if they went to, have them in a situation, so that I have free, I have some funds for them, for them, for a great partner.
Any additional questions? Okay, move on then to the Lakeway building, Eric out, I don't know anything to report today. Anything else under the banner of unfinished business? Hey, reports, negotiations, did I mean that all things? So does he have a slate of projects to recommend as well as a report to do?
So facilities meeting was relatively longer than normal. My entire ride to La Coruña.
We find a flash sometimes.
Just some updates on quick and storage sheds, high school sheds should be completed. It's all, you look across the parking lot, you can see it built on the other side. Balancing of the rooftop units scheduled over April vacation. Second floor maintenance, uh, monitoring also through over April vacation. Upper school street doors are obviously installed. No issues, I think they're great so far. Big difference at least on my, from what I see. Additional April vacation projects, Lakeway Elementary School dirt parking lot is going to get a refresh now that we're past the winter, hopefully. Outdoor cleanup and then moving drama storage from its current area to the old Channel Two room, which is down in, downstairs when we look down. Then we got a bunch of projects which Dale can probably go through, but we worked as a group at the end to kind of prioritize them for the board as to focusing on life safety items first and then any items that didn't really qualify for life safety, but might have been their aesthetics or just overall enhancement to the building. So we've got those presented today with some quotes as well. I think that was the majority of what we, oh, we've got Work Camp New England that is looking to come in and utilize some of our high school and middle school space while they're in the area doing some, kind of, as Dale said, it's similar to an habitat for humanity, but it's not that group. They come in and help. Community members with projects, house projects. It's a mix of adults and students and students, the only thing I didn't ask Dale, are there any students from our community involved in this or is it outside from our community coming in, you know?
They can apply through our website, or their website, sorry.
So, you know, they're, they're going to be here for, it looks like about two and a half weeks or so.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Utilizing our space to kind of camp out and clean up after each day's work and the adult chaperones appear with those students. So first time for us to involve in this group, but they are involved with other schools throughout the state. And so we talked through that. And then we've got a couple of other items, I think, the Lakeway playground we just talked about, going to address it, look at some updates to the material on the ground. I think that was about it. Did I miss anything other than details on the projects, Dale?
Uh, just the discussion that Crystal now need to have regarding the holiday concert and the spring musical concert moved from Lakeway to the high school because of capacity.
Say that last part again.
Moving because of capacity is what? The event to this location.
The elementary concert.
I believe it was facility. You're probably supposed to vote on it. Maybe I'll remember to come here instead. Okay, so we want to go through then the items that are being proposed in some detail?
We can. I would recommend if you didn't open Patty's year-end project, she hasn't made an order.
Yep, and they're on the, the list as well. It seems to be a.
Oh, you want to talk about each, we can go down.
Well, there seems to be a, a, a subjective decision for a hundred and eighty thousand for our best league, correct? If I'm reading the notes correctly?
Um, yes.
So we should probably talk about that.
Yeah. So I think you know what the propane fencing is. We've been talking about that since we installed it. It is a little bit higher because we did choose to go with the black because we have the black fencing down by the preschool area, so we just wanted it, everything to blend in. The gym interior doors at LES, that is truly just a guess. We have not got a firm quote yet, that's why I was requesting a little bit more than the figure that's at the bottom. And also the reason for that is the current doors are not fire rated and there's no window, correct?
And they don't lock.
Oh, and they don't lock.
You can't secure them.
So there's a few issues there. Let's see, exterior clapboard replacement. We did submit for the whole building to be done. We did request two quotes, one for just the front, one for the entire building. When everyone compared the two quotes, it's right off the bat saves five, fifty-five-hundred. I believe that was the quote, the amount, fifty-five-hundred, just by doing both at the same time. So everyone agreed that should happen.
And that comes to the equivalent of, so we do rent it due to work, you would have to rent it twice versus rent it a long time.
First course, ceiling tiles in the hallways. We did get a quote that included the classrooms and the hallways, but to add the classrooms, that's the hundred and eighty-eight thousand. I think the group was a little mixed, we didn't really take a vote or anything, but I think the group was a little mixed. Everyone agreed definitely, especially for doing the hallway floors, we should be doing the hallway ceilings. I remember, if I'm saying something wrong, just tell me, but this is what I get out of it. Because you don't want to put somebody on the spot because they don't agree, but, but then some, they talked about the convenience of doing the classrooms and having access above the ceiling with a drop-down ceiling compared to what we have now. That it would be convenient to have the classrooms done also, but I think the dollar figure, I truly just think it was the dollar figure alone that kind of scared people or what have you. And then the vestibule floors and the hallway floors, I bet myself, but yeah, replacing those. And those were all life safety concerns. And then down below is the high school acoustic panels. Right now Dale is renting curtains that have to be taken up, put up and taken down for, for events, for plays or what have you. Like, I think Steve's the one that actually said, this is just an expansion of last year's project that we did not take into consideration when we removed that ceiling, that there was going to be some sound barriers, issues that maybe we should have budgeted in for those panels, but we don't now. Not that Dale said he can't live with the curtains, but we have to put them up, take them down when we're going to rent them. So.
You know, it was kind of short notice, but I think we talked about on Friday about trying to get a quote of what it would be if we purchased our own curtains instead of renting them each time. Obviously we've had one day to get that.
I emailed her Friday, she emailed me back this morning and said she'd get it, but I don't have it as of right now.
So that might be an option, at, at least for, you know, for the next couple of years until we budget into a strategic plan of putting the panels up.
Dale, do you know off the top of your head, how many panels were talked, I mean seventeen thousand?
One hun- one hundred and six.
Yeah, so it's a lot of panels, just so you know. Seventeen thousand is a lot of money, but it's that many panels that would be permanently there.
Okay, so question. The board approved all these excluding the platinum tiles. The estimate to reduce taxes is three thirteen and change.
Correct.
How does that compare to last year?
Um, last year it was just over seven hundred. Prior year was six, something.
This is a lot less than it's been.
But this is just my first estimate. This is April, like, it will be more, but I'd rather tell you to get, have more money than to come back and say, oh, sorry.
And the budget itself predicted two hundred thousand back.
Correct. So it's still a reduction, you know, from what we estimated at our meeting. But then again, I don't know what valuation is going to be when October comes due, so that impacts the tax rate.
One of the things that, I mean, I'd like to be able to turn back over as much money as we can, but at the same token, it doesn't get any cheaper to make repairs to the buildings and we have a long list of stuff that needs to be done. So I would rather be a little bit more aggressive right now because I think a lot of projects could get cleaned up over a short period, two or three years. If we can pass that more into a maintenance phase and we can always turn more money back with the town later on. That was part of my reasoning why the, it is an extra hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but we don't like, let's bring it back to the board and suggest it.
In some of these things, we need to get vendors under contract sooner than later because the projects have to start by June thirty in some shape or manner. So we're not rushing you for support, but there is pieces of this that Dale needs to line up so things can get ordered, be here in time and, and they can get started. I think there definitely is support within the community, majority support to get the classroom ceilings done, but Dale, do you agree that that could be something that we possibly could put off and notify them in May?
Yeah, I mean, one thing that I. Yeah, I mean, one thing that I, I sent an email today to the company to just ask if that was, if that was to be done, what are we looking at for a timeframe? Because if we're doing the floors, we're doing the ceiling, trying to do summer school in the building, like, what we don't want to have happen is, you know, what the gym where it ended up being, middle of October before it was done, we have 11 classrooms or nine classrooms, whatever the number was, that aren't available to start the school year. So I did not hear back on that question either, but I think the consensus was supportive for that. I think the only two people that were hesitant really were Henry and I. And really, it's the price, from my perspective, we're putting a lot of money into a building that the board has said that we would like to move away from at some point and we don't know until next year what the community thinks about it, that's the best I can do.
Okay, so somebody's gotta make a motion, it could be a motion to approve with some sort of MTE that reflects not including the classroom.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the work list submitted by the facilities committee not to include the classroom ceilings, not gonna put the dollar on in there, but not to include the classroom ceilings. What's the total amount?
It's 246, but I did put in the vote not to exceed 250, is what I thought.
Okay, so not to exceed 250,000 dollars. So that's sufficient amount?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Anyone looking to make any amendments to that motion? Motion made, it's like, any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, staying motion fair, it's four, zero. Thanks for the important recommendations. Policy committee?
I think it makes sense to look at the classrooms after we hear, after we see what next year's vote.
Okay, policies?
Committee with, oh, sorry. I can read it, you need to talk, I'll be right here behind you.
Yeah, we have not had a policy committee since our last meeting. Our next one is, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we look pretty fast and furious over a while.
I don't think we earned the receipt of a report from our student representative, but did correspond with her on a number of occasions since our last meeting. She informed me that she goes to be back with us soon. I also did get some outreach from a local principal. We wanted to have, you know, leading the first school system who is considering becoming a student representative to chat with our student representative, find out just how vulnerable we really are. And so I did connect with permission from, from Mr. Smith, the superintendent, and from Mr. Brown, I did connect all of the principal from the Danville Middle High School. Their, their infosec policy blocked my email for getting back to the student though, so hopefully they at least got to the principal. We'll move on then to the superintendent's report.
Okay, kind of, kind of short tonight, just a few things. Well, I'd always like to talk a little bit about student activities, also linked in the, in general, I'll go through the number of activities, but just FYI, lots of stuff coming up as we head toward the end of the school year. Do you want, do you want to comment on the drama production a week before last? And four, four great productive performances again, it was a musical, which is unusual in the spring, usually Deb, in the past, has done a musical in the fall, and a little dinner theater sometime in the winter, and come back with a more conventional, frankly, a little less taxing production than a musical entails, but she decided to go to, go with two musicals this year and so she did. And great, great success. We talked about the acoustics in the gym a little bit and Dale, as before, and his crew made sure that we had the sound dampeners in there and all the sound was excellent. Really, I mean, with, in my opinion, the sound with the sound dampeners in there and even with the ceiling changes, the sound there's better than ever was, I remember back several years ago. So, so that, so that's, that was again, a great performance. Funding, you know, we, we keep, I keep going to meetings and they keep saying, you read the same news and listen to the same radio programs or whatever else, or not radio programs, but videos, YouTube, whatever, podcasts, boy, I can't believe I said it. And we don't know any more than you do, that's coming from the Department of Education in New Hampshire, others saying, look, indications are that funds are, will be available, on a little bit of a delay. And I know that there's been some statements made regarding Title I IDA being saved for funding, so we'll see. At the state level, legislature is down, down to the home stretch. If you've been following that, that was, that's, I can't imagine the position that the legislature's in right now, the governor and everybody else, but, you know, when you're, when you're disagreeing by 700 million dollars on what you've got to spend in terms of revenues, that makes tricky visiting, to say the least, so.
We're never that far.
I know. But, you know, and I do want, I know we were talking about this a little bit earlier, but with the, with the joint meeting the other night, I do want to acknowledge Darrell Lewis and Calvin Boyer and Joe, what's Joe, Martin? Martin, you know, Joe Martin being there. And as I said the other night, they've been responsive when I reached out to them, so on freedom, as, as Dave, by the way. So anyway, that, they've got their work cut out, but, but there's a few things, that's why I asked Rochelle, what she knew about the Dull Ed and a few, few things that they are looking at. They are looking at putting money into special ed, specifically catastrophic aid. So that's one that I think is of note. The one thing, one of the things that is happening right now in the legislature that terrifies Patty, especially, and should terrify us all, right, and I think is, is redoing the insurance pool and how that all works and, I don't know.
297, the risk pool.
Yeah, that's a concern.
Yeah, it's definitely a concern. We have three health insurance risk pool companies in the state and one has already pretty much closed their doors, whether 297 passes or not. The other, I mean, the Nets, New Hampshire and two local trusts, they carry proper program insurance. Then there is Health Trust who carries Anthem. And if 297 passes, they will end carrying health insurance next year. So if you work for a town, it will end this December, if you work for a school, it will end next June. They will just do like dental, life and disability, I think they're gonna look into like liability, building liability and stuff like that, but not health insurance. So school care, whom we're with, seems to be not supportive of it whatsoever because part of this bill will require school districts to establish, establish a capital reserve fund for health insurance risk. And it just increases their percentage that they have to put away, right, they're regulated now that, you know, they can't make income, you know what I mean? Like, they are heavily regulated already in these risk pools. Now it's just taking it to another level of increasing that threshold and some of them just can't do it. And if they did, our premiums would be huge, like, you know, so there's a lot going on. I mean, just less than two weeks ago, several North Country schools found out that they won't have health insurance as July 1st because they're closing up. So regardless, so it's pretty scary, I'm glad it wasn't us, to go up to bid and have a board decide where they're gonna go, you have your budget set, you don't know what your premiums are gonna be until you get under contract again and you have negotiated agreements that you have to follow to buy health insurance. So it's, it's just crazy, it, it's just one bill that's just spiraled and I personally don't want to see private insurance rates. I went up to bid when I first started here and health insurance through the private insurance industry is a lot different than going through a risk pool that's governed by your state, you know, basically. So, yeah, it's crazy world out there right now in Concord. So do you know anybody? No to 297?
Got anything else from the superintendent's report?
Is there any update on the voucher program for the state of New Hampshire that was, is that 115?
Yeah. The current status of that is that the income threshold will rise next year and then disappear entirely following. There's that, there's, there's also, Bill, I don't think it's going anywhere this year, apparently the total enrollment.
I heard.
Universal school choice. The tax cap, it's pronounced, we're dead, it's never over, it's over, but that's a very, say, why tax that from the total. We are, I think I mentioned this before, but we are gonna have to do a lot of work and, you know, it's important work anyway to make sure that we're involving parents, there's, there's really more, more expectation of parental involvement, parental rights and things like that. If the bills are right now, in, in process or in effect, I'm signing them. They've done all the work to do, like the city governors, I think it's pushing hard for the budget that she presented and the numbers that she used to write in that budget, so we'll see where, where all, all shakes up.
Another question I have, is there any update on listeners? I know they've separated from SCU grade five, are they with another SCU now, are they shopping or are they, do you have any idea what the, that's our close neighbor?
Yes, it is, yep. Not a lot at this point, I have, I have reached out, you know, making this point, they're gonna build their own, I mean, obviously they're gonna build their own, I'm not sure on services and those kinds of things. Seems like they've got some of the services that they can house already, but there could be some levels if they're shopping where possible. We'll have to see what the board is doing, once they get all the numbers.
It'll be July 1, 26.
Okay, so next year they stay with 35?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's important, point, yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Move then to public input. Now we'll look at properly worded motion, that's going to non-public.
Hold on, you can hold that thought for one second.
The motion on the summer, it's almost, it's almost.
We're talking about it now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to go back, we're sorry.
Yep, and we have, we have other personnel stuff to watch.
Yeah, I must think I have the same thing.
Yeah.
I was like, did I miss that? I could have missed it, I couldn't space out.
Okay, I am making a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of RSA 91833, for the record number one, number one, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disbanding of such employee or the investigation of any, or drivers against them.
Go ahead, number three, number one.
I had one, two, and three law listed together.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Two, the hiring of any person that's a public employee. Three, matters which are discussed in public will have adversely affected reputation of this person other than a member of this board who is taking with us the superintendent. You got a second?
I have a second.
Any expression? All who's in favor, roll call, please.
Bill Gendreau, very good.
Travis Howard. I take that motion, here's four, zero, start now in non-public. Thank you.